Great. No, I somewhere in the in the last week, I think I turned off like anybody who's off camera not to have them in the view. Because we had some big meetings where it was really cluttered. Well, welcome, everybody, and I appreciate you being here tonight. We've got a lot to do or a lot to go over anyway. So I'm going to just jump right in and see if anybody can help us get kicked off with getting our agenda approved. Trying to bounce between screens here. Could I get a motion?
A motion to approve the minutes.
Thanks, Ira.
My second.
Oh.
Thanks. Was that Melissa?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. All right. Any discussion on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of the agenda as published, say aye.
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 All those opposed? None. Okay, excellent. Let's see. Does anybody have the agenda up? Would someone like to read our land acknowledgement?
I can do that, Manny.
Thank you, Richard.
Planning Commission's land acknowledgement. We'd like to acknowledge we are on the traditional land of a rich and diverse group of native peoples who have called this area home for more than 10,000 years. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the descendants of these native people who are still here today.
Thanks so much. Okay. Oh, look, I did that backwards. How about meeting minutes? Has everyone had a chance to read through the meeting minutes Steve sent from from January 11? Okay, excellent. Could I get a motion to approve these minutes and then we'll see if there's any discussion?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Thanks, Ira.
Okay.
Thanks, Richard. Any discussion on the minutes? Any questions? Okay, Nick, I just want to say again, I don't think we can say too too much how helpful the minutes are. I still hear from people, you know, now and again, who say it's so much easier to get a real sense of what we talked about in how you construct and construct them. They they have enough specificity to be informative but aren't so burdensome that they well, you know, take forever to get through. So thank you for that. Okay, all those in favor of adopting the minutes as published, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? Excellent. Okay. Back to the agenda. Here we go. All right, next meeting is March the 8th. As usual, if you won't be able to join us, please let us know to make sure that we can plan accordingly. And now we're at citizens comments. We've got a number of folks joining us and I'd love to ask you if you'd like to make a comment to use the raise hand feature and Nick will let you in to comment. Let's see, Stephanie raised her hand. Yeah, Stephanie raised her hand.
Stephanie, go ahead. You should be able to be heard.
Hi, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Great. Um, my question is about the potential new rules for accessory dwelling units.
Stephanie, before you before you go on with your comments, will you give us your first and last name and your address, please? For the record.
Sure. This is Stephanie Shank and I live at 18749 23rd Avenue Northeast. Right up off of Perkins. Shall I go on then?
That's great. Yeah, please, with your comment.
Uh, so we've heard that y'all are working on new rules for accessory dwelling units and we moved into a kind of a rundown house and want to rebuild it, but we want to build our garage and accessory dwelling unit first so that we can mo- partially move into that while we build the main house. So we're wondering and and the changes that I have been trying to keep up with that y'all are propose potentially proposing look like they would be great, like it would be great to have more space. Any way you slice it, it's more it's more space and more options for us to have a little bit more, especially since when we rebuild our our main house, we are limited in we're limited there too to because of some because there's wetlands around and different things that constrain it. So um I was wondering if you could share when you think you'll be proposing or passing that because we're trying to make plans. And also if there's a best place to go to to find out about the the latest proposals, because as we make plans, we can possibly narrow it down if we think it's between a couple of different things and that kind of thing. That's my question.
Okay, thank you. So normally on comments, we don't engage both ways. I know it just doesn't seem particularly beneficial. But I will say in this case, we've sent our recommendations over to the city council last fall and they tabled them until this past January until the new council was seated. And they've started working on that. So you can listen into their conversations so far just by going to the city website and hearing hearing. I think you've had two touch points. No, one council member Bodie, is that right? You guys have taken it.
No, we we have had to, but we're continuing to discuss the issues. And Steve, do you know the the date of the public hearing that we have tentatively set?
We're gonna ask the council to approve setting the public hearing for the 24th of this month. So that and you know, it it will be discussed at this upcoming meeting as well on the 10th.
So there are drafts of the latest working documents that the council is working from that are attached to the agenda meetings of the of the council. So I do think that there's it. It's a little bit hard to follow because it's it's moving towards closure. But but following the public hearing, then the council will make a decision and and prob- and schedule a vote which hasn't been scheduled yet.
So Stephanie, we're going to move on, but there there are materials that you can follow online. I'm also glad to receive emails as I'm sure Director Bennett is too, if you, you know, have real specific questions, but timing council's working on it now and it looks like they may be in a position to adopt changes in March or April, depending on how quickly they're able to bring that their work to closure.
Thank you so much.
You're so welcome. Okay, and then we have Jolene Jing.
Go ahead, Ms. Jing.
3611 Northeast 205th Street, Jolene Jing. At the last council meeting, Planning Commissioner Larson talked about the examining the process of the reasonable use exception for housing. The onus is supposed to land on the applicant to prove there is no other reasonable economic use with less impact on the critical area and does not pose an unreasonable threat to the public health. In reality, it feels like the burden is on the residents and the neighbors to question and to build a case to prove there are threats created by the development. And I agree with her. In my case, I am on the adjacent neighbor to a virgin lot that was bought for 40 grand because Lion Creek splits splits it in half and there are protections for it. The burden does feel like it's on my shoulders and and up to also environmental groups to do the heavy lifting and investing. I knew close to nothing about LFP code, critical root zones, hydrograph, fluvial morphology, but I'm getting education. Because of my network and my parents' community ties, I'm able to learn with guidance and with help of the LFP Stewart Foundation. After 300 hours of learning about this case, reading code, talking to city, county, state regulatory organizations, plethora of environmental groups, I'm beginning to understand how to navigate these waters. That's a full time job. So so far, this equals seven and a half weeks, 40 hours a week. So should an LFP resident have to dedicate three a minimum of 300 hours to save the environment and protect their safety? And how comfortable would the average person be to make public comments comments every time and reach out to strangers? You know, I'm I'm different in that way. So let's look at it also from the city planning staff from their lens. They have tremendous pressure from the Master Builders Association, from developers and the Rue code. So let's make it easier for Bennett and Holland and for them to do their job. Let's make it. Let's look at that. I believe that they're in government work because they want to make a difference in our community. But with these pressures, I can imagine it must be challenging to hold the developers accountable unless there's a large community outcry. My my mom's friend is was one of the founders of the Snow King Watershed. And she could not believe that this Rue was even in process because she says, well, LFP, they're the gold standard of of protecting trees and the streams. And I've heard that several times. So I I know that LFP believes in maintaining our tree canopy and restoring the salmon. So please protect these small parcels that are going to be snapped up and abused. So what the city does for this model case as the the property right by me could this set precedent of how we do all the cases manages that could be good or bad. So if if this Rue proposal is approved, perhaps we need to say goodbye to all the critical areas and goodbye to the salmon and trees. So think about that. That's death by a thousand cuts parcel by parcel. And then it's irreversible. So I invite you to come out to my place and we can look and walk around the property outside of it. So you can take and see what's at risk here. Thank you.
Thank you, Jolene. I I hope you'll be excited to see that our draft work plan actually has a review of RUE policies and our administrative processes. So that is something that we'll work on this year and I really appreciate you bringing it to our attention. I I am I do think that you're right, spending 300 hours is excessive, you know, to try to figure out what's happening next door. Is there anybody else that wants to make a public comment tonight? If so, please raise your hand. All right, I don't see any. We'll make sure we leave space at the end of our meeting, which we'll try to end on time. So if you think of something you want to say, no, we'll come back to public comment at the end. All right. Sorry, you guys, I'm trying to toggle between the many tabs here. What do we have next? Oh, report from Councilmember Bodie.
Thank you and welcome to the new members. And I would like to say I am sorry to know that this is Richard's last meeting as a planning commissioner and he has been doing this for years now. Providing years of service, many thoughtful comments and recommendations and has had a real impact on our city code and our provisions for environmental and ecosystem protection. So I just want to say thank you, Richard, because it really has been a huge investment of hours and time and it's it's made a difference. So thank you very much on behalf of the council.
Thank you. That's very kind.
Yeah. Back to the council, I want to say we did have a selection of committee chairs and so forth. Our new deputy mayor is Councilmember Tom French. Our council vice chair now is Philippa Cassover. So they have kind of flipped roles compared to the positions they were in last year. For the time being, Councilmember French is also going to be the budget committee chair. And Councilmember Riddle will be the budget committee vice chair. And there's a lot of budget discussion that is going to be upcoming. That's going to be important to cover. In addition to the planning commission, which I'm still the liaison to and the parks board, which I'm also the liaison to. We have our tree board and who is our liaison to the tree board? Steve, can you remind me?
I believe it's no, I I don't know. Councilmember Furutani is going to be for the council, the climate action committee. So I'm not sure.
Right. I'm not sure. I'm not sure which of our new council members is the liaison to the tree board. I apologize for that. And we will be setting up a new climate action committee and we could have one or two council members that are liaison to that because two of our new council members have expressed interest in that. So stay tuned. The mayor is vetting potential members of that committee. I would say for the Parks Board and the Climate Action Committee, they don't have a history of being up and running the way the planning commission has. And so the startup will probably be a little bit slow talking about things like meeting minutes and and, you know, simplified Roberts rules and so forth and just gelling as a as a group that works together. So but stay tuned for that. There'll be a lot of a lot more activity and developments, I think. And that Climate Action Committee is something that all the council members feel very positive and strong about. The Parks Board, as I've talked about with you before, the city staff is trying to come up with some funds so that we could start a public engagement process and start some preliminary work towards a master plan for for the new waterfront park. But that's still under discussion. So more to come on that. We talked a little bit before the meeting really got started about the fact that there's active legislation right now that our city is monitoring in the state legislature, both on ADUs and to increase density overall in single family zoned areas. It's very fluid. Our city is trying to represent our environmental interests as well as our interest in making sure that we do have affordable housing and that we do have adequate city services like sewer, water, schools, things like that. So things are moving very fast or hard to follow. And I don't think we know exactly what's going to be voted on as final at this stage, but there's a lot in flux and some could affect the quality of life in our city. So we are concerned about that as well as the even the role of the planning commission. If the state legislature basically goes too far in usurping local zoning. And last but not least, at the council meeting Thursday at the council work session, there'll be a presentation from King Conservation District on how they approach riparian restoration. And I know that the planning commission has heard some about that, about the desire of the stewardship foundation to avoid use of herbicides. And so that is a start of the council educating itself on how the King Conservation District views that. And then at the council, actual council meeting, Jeff Jensen will be making a presentation you might be interested in about local salmon and some unique populations that he's found in the north end of Lake Washington. It's really a fun presentation. So that's it for me. Any questions?
Anybody have questions? Oh, let's see, Melissa.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just have a couple of questions. One of them is some of meeting that we had a while back and it was talking about the emergency shelter that um we were required to have. I believe it had to do with like the commercial corridor zoning. If I remember, I just I haven't heard anything else about it. I was wondering if there was any movement on that and what that all means.
Yes, we had a deadline. The council had a deadline. Our our city attorney Pratt guided us along the way and made sure we met the deadline. So we actually developed some, not only some regulations on where emergency and transitional housing could be consistent with the state legislation, but also we adopted some you know, a small list of regulatory provisions that we that we were able to find from looking at other resources around and what other communities have done. So so yes, that's in place right now and and fully adopted.
Okay.
They are interim though.
Oh, right. Thank you. That out.
They'll need to be extended or or adopted permanently.
Okay.
Yes, we were. We were definitely under the gun in terms of time if we were going to meet the deadlines. I don't know if all cities did, but we tried to. So.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Councilmember Bodie? Richard?
Yeah, Councilmember Bodie, anything on sound transit?
Sound Transit is continuing to move ahead on the bus rapid transit work and they still are professing that they will have things done in 2024. I think Planning Director Bennett should could probably tell you a little bit more about what's actually going on in terms of conversations with our city our city staff. But I they are definitely continuing to move ahead with planning for the bus rapid transit stations and the widening of Bothell Way.
Okay, thank you.
Steve, did you want to add anything?
Sure. Yeah, we're trying to figure out if Sound Transit would like us to have agreements with them about permitting timeframes and things like that. And so we're trying to figure out whether that's really necessary. We already have sort of a an overriding agreement that the council has approved. And you know, we have processes in place. So that's still yet to be determined whether or not we're going to do that. But they're getting close to where they can start submitting some applications and I think in the next quarter or or so for you know, critical area type things and they're they're they would like the city to kind of do over the shoulder design consulting with our 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 civil engineering consultants. So so things are moving along and we're getting a better idea of what the you know, the counts are going to be for trees and things like that. But it's still a little early for them to apply for for permits at this point.
Thanks, Steve.
So the plan is still to have a fairly large retaining wall on the uphill side as part of the widening of Bothell Way to have fairly large bus stops in at 153rd, 160th and Town Center that will accommodate two buses buses head to toe and a sidewalk along the the lakeside of the road. So as far as I know, those are still some of the fundamentals of the plan. I think from my point of view, I want to make sure that that retain first of all, that the trees that are removed are mitigated. And second of all, that that retaining wall isn't too ugly. Because it's the gateway to our city.
Ira.
Commissioner Bodie, my question, when you said that they were going to be done by 2024, is that done with the design and submitted for permits or is that done with construction?
Done with construction. It may be ambitious considering how long things take and the supply chain issues. So that that is probably a target goal for them.
Thank you.
Okay, let uh any last questions? I I had just one Councilmember Bodie for the climate group that's coming together. Is that will that have a representative from will those be representatives from the community much like this? Will there be any sense of having a representative or liaison from planning commission? Or how is that? How how will membership be determined for that group?
They are interested members of the community. Some council members, including myself, have nominated individuals who they know have expertise or interest in in serving. And so it will be a groups like this composed of community members who are interested. There will be some guidance from the council, I'm sure, but we haven't developed that yet. And so I do think that it's it's a little bit still to be determined that way. And I know we have talked before about the fact that there if you're talking about topics within the purview of the planning commission, we need to figure out how to coordinate those things and not we we certainly don't want to erode the importance of the planning commission for those kind of decisions. But how would that work? Would there be a joint meeting? Would would there be a coordination group? I I don't think that those issues are resolved yet. We're still we're still working on membership and and also I think there'll be probably quite a bit of time involved in developing their work plan before before things get up and running. I think once we see their work plan, we'll be in a better position to figure out how coordination between the planning commission and the and the Climate Action Committee, how that coordination should best occur. And certainly will will be I'll keep you apprised. So you can all weigh in on what you think would be best as well.
Thank you so much. All right, I think that takes us into old business and the sign code update. I also, before we get any further along, wanted to officially welcome Jim and Walter as as we get started with a new product project. I know we've we've been dabbling with the sign code, but this really is kind of the I feel like the first meeting where we're going to dive in headlong and under Attorney Pratt's capable guidance and and Steve, thank you for all the work you've you and Attorney Pratt did to prep us for tonight. With that, would you like to lead us through the work you guys have done?
Yeah, let me just just kind of introduce or kind of an objective for what we might want to accomplish tonight. Because this is this is a lot of code compared to the ADU regulations that you looked at, which little easier to digest. And so that was kind of confusing initially. I myself had to have two hour long sessions with Kim just to get my head wrapped around this. So it's totally understandable if this first time through, it's still, you know, is is not totally clear what's happening here. But I think, you know, it it is worthwhile just to walk through this section by section, see what your questions are. City Attorney Pratt can hopefully just kind of give an overview overview of what her approach is. And and then we could look at each section, you know, like starting with the definitions. I'll pull it up on the screen so everybody can see it. And then after an initial explanation of the section, take questions from planning commissioners and just kind of see if we can get through, you know, if we even just get through half of it, that that would be a good accomplishment for this evening. So but maybe we can just get through with an initial overview of the whole thing. So everybody's got a better feel for it. And we, as I said in my memo to you, we have this table that we can look at afterwards, maybe just to kind of talk about, you know, what what's happening on on a a, you know, sort of global level. I think the table is going to be more useful farther down the road when, you know, you're starting to invest yourselves and and any additional amendments you you want to make. But if if at any point, you know, it's helpful to go to the table, we can certainly move to the table and talk about it. So with that, hand it over to City Attorney Pratt.
Okay, thanks. So what I did first was read through the code and find the problem areas where I thought we'd be in violation of the new case law about signs where we are cities are not supposed to really regulate non-commercial signs based on code unless we can meet a higher constitutional standard. And for commercial signs, that standard's a bit lower. But I went through the first time and just looked at, okay, where do where are we regulating on content? And unfortunately, when I started with the definition section of the code, you can just see automatically, like many, many other cities, we were regulating based on content. Steve, do you want to pull up?
Sure.
I think it's your attachment too. So what I did is I first deleted those definitions that were based on content like celebration displays. You're this first one. It doesn't mean that those signs will not be regulated anymore. And in the the chart, in my mind, I was like, okay, how are we going to regulate these signs without regulating their content? And in my mind, these were temporary signs. And so that's where they're being regulated. And that's what the chart would show you is that now they're being regulated as temporary signs and we don't have to read them to know how we're going to regulate them. I also added some definitions like animated sign, which includes some things where we might have had it in every section of the code saying you can't have changing lighting or flashing lights or inflatable signs. We now this would give us one definition and it would prohibit these things on signs. I also be awning or canopy signs. You'll see throughout here that there's definitions of additional types of signs that LFP didn't have in the code. If there's any of those types of signs that you don't want in LFP, those could just those could just be taken out. But I've added in probably five or six. Those are listed in the chart too for you to consider. Banners were allowed, but we didn't have a definition. So I just added a definition. Changing message signs, we did have these kinds of signs. But we weren't really regulating them the way that they're defined. This said, they were only supposed to show time, date and temperature. We have been allowing signs that include more than that, but are only just message with numbers and letters. And so this has been edited to be in line with what we have been allowing. But that's for your consideration. Let's see, construction signs, again, that was based on content. Illuminating sign, adding a definition is pretty intuitive anyway. Lawn sign, adding that definition. These incidental signs, again, if you look, they were based on content. And so I I deleted that as well. You'll see down here, for instance, it said there was a maximum of two incidental signs. So now we'll have some maximum of temporary signs. So I'll be put into that category and there will be a maximum still still sign sized regulations, things like that. Let's see, keep going. Marquee sign, a type of sign you might want to keep monument sign, same thing. And as you guys know, you can play with the with any part of this description. You know, how high it's going to be 100% greater, anything about the look of it you could change or you could delete it at all. Off premises signs like billboards, we kept that and just made it being them being permanent signs like a billboard or pedestal sign. Because we will have some temporary signs that are off premises signs, such as in the right of way. Pedestal signs were add, full signs add, portable signs definition. These were probably all types of these were seen in the city, A-frame, portable reader boards, lawn signs. We just gave it a definition to maybe be able to refer to it more easily in the rest of the code. Political signs, obviously content based, so we had to take that out. Real estate signs, same way. So those again are regulated as temporary signs. Define right of way because there are signs that we allowed to be in the right of way. Only portions of the right of way, but we did include that definition. Sign boards, there was a definition and dimensions. I'm suggesting changes to those. But that's for you to look at and consider. Seasonal signs, again, content based. Just just making a little clear how we measure sign area. A lot of times you'll want to say how many square feet per site it can be, how high it can be. Definition of sign kept the same. Just deleted some stuff that was redundant at the bottom there. Temporary signs added a definition. Wall signs added a definition, window signs added a definition. Both of those the code was already using, I just added a definition. This is a little, I'll say unusual, unique. Streetlight banners, the code, people who do our code, the code revisers, they had a note saying that this definition was repealed in as of 2007. And but it didn't doesn't show as repealed. It's not it still shows in the code as if it were in place. So streetlight banners have been allowed past 2007. And I believe that, you know, Steve's recommendation and you guys can consider it would be that we still allow streetlight banners. And so we would undelete this. But in my last version, I did show it as deleted and explaining that it was by an earlier code amendment. Let's see.
That that was not an intentional unsharing screen. My my laptop just decided it had a bad signal. So I'll try to reestablish it. But that's maybe a good place to just see if there's any questions at this point. So it looks like Commissioner Brewery has a question.
Yeah, just a just a quick one. When I was looking through this, it certainly appears that there would be in the proposal signs in the right way allowed. Is there are there allowed today in the right of way?
Yes.
It was hard to sort of decipher through and trace it. So there are signs allowed today in the right of way.
Yes. So as a continuation of that.
That's something that I'd like to have a conversation about when we have a chance.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Yes, Steve, I've got one.
Go ahead, Richard.
Attorney Pratt, really just kind of from my own information. But so a lot of new definitions here. Did they what where did they come from? Is there like a standard? You know, or was this based off another code or?
There's not, I wouldn't say really a standard, but I did look in multiple codes. I had worked on Covington's sign code. So in my mind, I knew that it was legally okay. And so I used a lot of definitions from that. But you guys can certainly decide if those definitions meet LFP's needs. And sometimes I would look at other codes too. I tried to keep it to cities of similar size when I look for things for LFP.
That's helpful though, knowing that it came from an existing code that is already out there, right?
Yeah, they went through their revision a while ago.
And the other one is a monochromatic. Why I don't quite understand the why that is preferred.
I I'll let Steve answer that first. I have an idea, but.
That that's been sort of a an issue that's evolved with the deja vu sign. There they there was a time when I mean, when when these electronic reader boards were first came out. That's kind of when this regulation was, you know, it was it was kind of pre like 1999, you know, it was just it had like time, date and temperature, right? That's that's what the definition says about these electronic signs. But then as and that's what deja vu was basically approved under. I think actually it was a it was a nonconforming sign even then because it already existed when it was incorporated in the city. So when they got a permit to replace the reader board in their sign, we said that it had to be, you know, the same capabilities. And clearly there the model that they put in there had more capability. So we went back and showed them, we got complaints about, you know, images appearing on their sign that, you know, that it had to that there wasn't supposed to be moving images. And that was a term we came up with in the permit was monochromatic. In other words, that, you know, you can, you know, it doesn't have to be, you know, black and white. But, you know, it's it can't be one of, you know, started heading towards what, you know, so distracting about a color moving display. So that's that's kind of that's basically it's new language for the code. And maybe there's an improvement we can make on it.
Okay.
But really looking looking for safety and aesthetics is the justification I would have for making it monochromatic. Again, that's for your consideration.
Thanks.
Any other questions at this point or should we keep going? Okay, here we go, give it a shot. Okay, we're back in business. Go ahead, Kim.
So then prohibited signs, we they were called illegal signs. I always think of crimes when I think of illegal, so I made it prohibited. And I just picked out what I thought were things that either were already in your code that were being restricted or in certain signs saying they couldn't be attached and just putting them in this section of code and maybe adding a few that have, I'll say come about since the sign code was written, maybe speakers and things like that. So I added sections there. Let me keep going, Steve. Dangerous signs, instead of putting that in every section of the code, we're just saying you can't impede motorists and pedestrians with your signs. You can't impede ingress and egress. So we don't have to keep saying it over and over again. Yeah, any questions there?
I have a question on on that particular one, actually. How how can we define that something is dangerous based off of the color wording or design? But we can't restrict it based off of content otherwise.
I think you're right, we will have to take out. We'd probably be better off taking out wording. I think color, though, like if something, I think a color could be dangerous if maybe I I'm thinking of something that looks too much like a stop sign or some sort of other, you know, regular regulatory sign, shape. Yeah, but I it would be good to take out wording. Yeah, that's a good catch.
Any other questions on this section two?
So I guess I just want to say I think wording fits there.
Okay.
In in the sense of like, I don't think you should have a sign visual to, you know, motorists that says stop. Like, so I think there's having the ability to regulate very limitedly wording is important. And I don't think that crosses into content.
And we could consider whether that would probably meet the higher constitutional standard. You know, what is what is the city's interest in keeping that stop sign out of the, you know, people's sight when they're driving? So you could look at should that should wording be in or out? Yeah, good points.
Kim, I had a question about item six, line eight. And and it references another part part of the code. Is this, it feels like it's a bit of a change, which I'm I'm all for if I'm reading it correctly. But it sounds like it's 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 putting limits on what can be in public on public property and in public easements. Is that?
That's correct.
True? Okay, so it's it's an increase in the in the in the in what can actually be put in those zones?
Actually, it should be the, in my thinking, I was it was it's about the same as what we have now. So you can't put us, you can put a sign in the right of way, but only in certain parts of the right of way, as we would see in the the definition for right of way. You can't put the sign in a median or you can't put it in the middle of the roundabout. Sidewalks would be in the right of way. You can't put your A board on the sidewalk. If the utility pole was in the right of way, you can't put your sign there. But there are places in the right of way where you can put signs. So this prohibition should match with how we define right of way. And then this 1852080, I think, is where we say what signs can go in the right of way.
Right. Okay, so we can get to that later, but I it does reference that section because without the reference to that section, we would be saying that these spaces can no longer have signs, including the temporary signs that that flood those areas at different times of the year.
Right, I I don't know. Steve, are signs allowed in medians right now?
No, they're not.
So so there's only a limited area of right of way where signs can even go today. And we're not trying to expand that. That's for you guys to consider, but.
Okay, no, I just I was recalling that during, you know, election season, the there's sort of this explosion of signs that even I really don't enjoy. And and it seems like this is 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 raining that in a little bit, same with like, you know, lawn services and stuff that are stapled up to telephone poles. I wondered if that was new or if it's just a, you know, if it if it happens now, but it's an enforcement issue.
I'm guessing it's an enforcement issue. Even political signs are put in the wrong place. And, you know, sometimes they get taken out and sometimes cities and counties don't have time, yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank.
Yeah.
Okay, should we keep going? Section three.
The exemptions, so these signs, they wouldn't have to get a permit. And we can play with this, but probably the biggest one is temporary signs of a smaller size, wouldn't have to get a permit. And three feet by four feet is what I found to be a kind of a common smaller campaign sign. And so they wouldn't have to get a permit, but they're still regulated. They will would still have to go only in areas where temporary signs are allowed. So that's something for you to consider. And then signs like the land use signs, you know, land use action, public notices, things like that would not have to get permits either. Some of these that didn't have to get permits before and were exempt were based on content like the political signs, seasonal signs.
The idea is that we've covered these deleted ones with the the new definitions, right, Kim?
Yes, yes, they're still regulated, but not based on content. Some of them too, like sculptures, fountains, benches. Those are, as we define sign, those aren't signs in the normal sense of the word. And so I just took those out. If if a bench includes an advertisement sign, that sign's going to be regulated. Bench might not be, but this time we I took that out.
Okay.
Kim, we have a couple of questions.
Okay, sorry, I can't see you the way this is showing.
That's okay, Jim.
So so looking at regulating content, if if something is advertising a business, it is, isn't it a an off premise sign? And so therefore, there is some content, obviously, in that.
There will be content on the sign and the off premises sign, it will be. So we're 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 having to look at, do we think we can meet the constitutional standards with our off premises sign regulation? There's a few places like that.
The big biggest concern I have are these snipe signs or these business signs that that crop up everywhere that are just a scourge on the city, in any city. It's just really a major, major issue and problem. And so people could not wanting that sort of thing to be able to happen with really is advertising a business. I mean, they're signs if you want to buy food, you know, whatever, give you a telephone number to go. Regulating those, I think is very important so that we can stop this proliferation all over our city that happens in many places in the public right of way.
Yeah, yeah. So another way to do it would be to limit how long the sign can be there. Or what I did include, and you guys can consider it, is said there can't be any more than, I think I said, six for any one purpose, business. So it would prohibit somebody from, you know, blasting the city with 50 of their signs, but.
But so the problem is, once you open that Pandora's box and you allow them in the right of way in that fashion, regulating them and enforcing them is extremely. And you allow them in the right of way in that fashion, regulating them and enforcing them is extremely difficult. Once you do that, if you say you can't have these advertising signs in the public right of way, you don't have any allowed. And I think that makes a big difference. I mean, and I know in the last city I managed, it was just horrendous. We would, it would not have more allowed. We would go out collecting these signs, we'd have code enforcement people going and collecting these hundreds of signs all over the city. That were just almost impossible to enforce. And actually, one of the ways we decided to enforce them was. Was actually do a robo call, so there's a robo calls to that number. Until they took their sign down, we clawed we clawed their number up so they couldn't couldn't do business, but it just is it is a horrible. Issue and challenge for us, I think.
Jim, thank you so much for that. I think please help help us to to keep that on our radar. So that when we actually do make recommendations to these, that we don't lose sight of that topic. TJ, you have your hand up as well.
Yeah, thanks, Manny. Kim, I was wondering, I noticed in the political signs that in the deleted part and know this that, you know. They have to be taken down within like three or five days. I forget exactly which of the end of a campaign. And I'm curious. And maybe we'll get to this later on, but I didn't notice how that sort of thing gets regulated. In this more general format.
In this current draft, there is no duration. Other than if you want the sign to be up for more than seven days, you have to get a permit. So you could consider duration. If you wanted to add one in.
So in in this, then any political sign out for more than seven days would be in violation.
If it didn't have a permit.
If it didn't have a permit. Thanks.
Yeah, that's how it's drafted now.
Sorry, but those would be exempted if they were like in your personal lawn. So that the question then becomes like, what about ones that are along the public right of way and people's yard, but they didn't place them there?
Actually, temporary signs even not in the right of way that are up for more than seven days, I believe under this draft would have to get a permit.
So even if that include like like a Black Lives Matter in your front, you know, flower bed?
That would meet the definition of sign, yes.
So then, so any, so folks that are keeping signs that have statements about, you know, be kind or anything else that. That 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 is that new or is that just currently an enforcement issue that we we have the rule that you? You know. Do we already have a rule that's kind of governing that that's not being enforced, or would this be new?
Well, we currently haven't been doing anything in terms of. Things that seem like free speech. We've we've we don't have, our code hasn't been clear enough for us to, so so we have just, you know, talked about it. With Ms. Pratt or whatever and said, you know, is this something that that can't, you know, that that there is is. We're not allowed to regulate, like the 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 banner that was up across from City Hall for a long time about the Lorax. So I guess, you know, from administrative point of view. I don't want to have to be issuing permits for all of these signs, so. Definitely, I think we can think of a better way of doing this, other than just saying, well, you didn't get a permit. And then having everybody, you know, a slew of permit applications come in for, you know. Whatever political statement you have in your front yard.
Right, I think that's just, that's the point I'm trying to make is not so much to litigate that here because our group can talk about that when we actually think about the recommendations. We want to make, but more to clarify with Attorney Pratt if if. If it's it sounds like that would be something that would be regulated and then so technically to have. This sign, whether it's happy birthday or it's a boy. Those would suddenly be all within the realm of temporary signs that would re potentially require a permit and have a. A timeframe. They couldn't stay up in your neighbor's yard indefinitely. And I I I am asking this because as we communicate with the community about our recommendations. I think we need to be able to clarify where there may be changes that. Are different than what they experienced today.
We did in. In not in not wanting to have to permit every single temporary sign that goes up in someone's yard. Or in the right of way, say a political sign during that season and not wanting to have to permit every one of those signs. We did make. That that exemption for the three three by four temporary sign. So that wouldn't require a permit.
Correct, but it but it has, I think, were you saying, though, that it has a time limit on it?
Not those small ones.
The small ones never have a time limit.
Yeah, they're exempt.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that clarification.
But it is problematic, and we were also thinking about, you know, the real estate, the for sale or open house signs. Those are off premises signs. We would consider temporary signs and so. We also, you know, do you want to prohibit those? If you didn't think so, so they're allowed as temporary. Lots of different. Imaginations and those signs like the Black Lives Matter, those would be under that highest constitutional scrutiny. It's non-political sign, and so we have to be very.
So do so is would that be correct then that under this exemption, item C, that if it's this size or smaller? And fits the definition of a temporary sign, it can stay up indefinitely?
So that would take into account the the real estate signs as well?
I I I wonder where that, so I guess I'm just trying to figure out where that then conflicts with something that Jim was talking about if somebody's. If somebody has put up a, you know, attached to. You know, a utility pole or in a public right of way, you know, something within this size that's advertising a business or service. You know, this sort of thing.
Temporary signs are unattached, so they couldn't be on the utility pole. So no sign can be, so we're okay there. But right now, they could go in the right of way. So we're not, you know, there's the potential for the problem Jim has described.
Right, and right now, because we it we are regulating content, we've been able to specify for political signs, for example, that they have to come down. Within so many days, but if we're not regulating. Content or can or can't, then. I would assume then that we lose the op option of saying those have to come down in a timeframe.
Right, I did, I did play with duration, try and figure out what we might be able to do and. I'll just say those those that political sign of take it down within five days, we could not have enforced that. Under current case law, so it was in the code, but. We couldn't because it was based on content.
I think there's a lot of questions, so I'll stop the share for a little bit.
David, are you trying to ask a question?
Not so much a question, but first thing I just want to acknowledge is that Attorney Pratt, this is an amazing amount of work. That you've accomplished, right? And I'm wondering if for the sake of this, I mean, we're already eight o'clock and and for the sake of this conversation. If we can allow Attorney Pratt to get through the entire presentation before we narrow in on the questions, because I think it would allow us to. You know, really get the big picture so that we can start really, you know, determining how do we want to address this? Moving forward.
Yeah, I I I agree, David, Attorney Pratt, if you'd like to continue, I I I just wasn't sure if. We were going to have the benefit of Attorney Pratt at another meeting and so wanted some clarification on what these things meant, not so much. Finding solutions for them tonight.
I think Steve's gonna have me at meetings when you need me, so.
Okay, great.
Yeah, right now, until we get done. You're going to be asked.
Well, I'll figure it out.
All right, so where were we? We were at. Did we get through temporary signs?
Temporary signs, we did not get through. So all the temporary signs have to comply with all of. These regulations. Trying to look at. Where are they? They're within the private property or they're within the part of the right of way where they're allowed. What they're made of, just trying to regulate everything but content and how you might want them to show. There are some things like I know illumination. You might want to say temporary signs can't be eliminated, but here's an option for you where it would have to go off during certain hours and see. Certain locations, not on a roof, not on fences, you know, you might think fences is fine, but no roofs, you know, so for your consideration. If you can keep going down, Steve. You scroll down, Steve.
I did, I don't know why it's. Hopefully it'll catch up in a second.
Yeah. We might even be able to take out four D four hazardous to a motorist. We already have that as a general prohibition. Just kind of put it in there again for emphasis, but we don't really need to do that, probably. Can't have it in the sight distance triangle. Size. You can look at that. Steve and I landed on six square feet per side, no more than four feet high. In residential, single family and multifamily zones. We put the same for the commercial and the neighborhood business in the town center zones. But you might want to consider if you want to allow. Larger signs in commercial, larger temporary signs. Window signs can't exceed fifty percent of the area of the window. And then F is where I tried to put in a maximum number of temporary signs. You can consider that's too high or too low, or you don't want to limit the number, kind of here, you probably do. And this would say, so you can have four total. Unless provided otherwise in the chapter and right now. In the current code, only one temporary sign is allowed in the business commercial. And the corridor commercial, just one and and in the town center zone. It's eight in various places, so you might want to consider whether. Neighborhood. Business and corridor commercial might be allowed some more temporary signs. Think it went off again, didn't it? Okay.
So, okay, it's back, it's back now. We might want to.
I can.
Yeah, we might want to make you.
Make me host or share? It says.
While you're figuring that out, Melissa, would you like to pose your question?
Um, yeah, I just, so I had a quick question about, again, I guess the temporary signs and. So if you're, so if I have a property and I'm only allowed to have two signs, temporary signs. Facing any side of my house and for total, does that include things like? You know, I I saw something earlier about like the land use action signs, which would be like a tree removal permit, I'm assuming. Does that count as a temporary sign? And would would that count against my total of signs?
So my read would be that's an exempt sign, so it shouldn't be counted.
And then. So. A temporary sign would be anything, so like if I had a. You know, private property sign, and then I also had a sign out there that said, you know, like advertised my. Alarm security company, that would be my two signs and. That would be it, like if that's the only area I had to put my signs out in the front of my house.
Yes, that's what it says currently, this draft, that would be two.
And then just a quick question, or or I don't have one, but it's like beware a dog on your door, is that a sign?
So that's not temporary because it's on your door.
But is that a sign or is that just part of your? Okay.
Your freedom of speech in action.
Okay, you're a co-host, Kim, if you want to.
Okay. I'm in control. No, you're not seeing. No, wait, now are you seeing my sign code? Okay, so the the existing regulations for certain zones. First, we existing code divides it into residential, multifamily and residential, single family zones. We kept that, that's how you're going to look at these if you want to, so we, I only changed. I was only trying to look at it from that legal perspective of are we regulating content? And other things I tried. Not to change too much, thinking, I think Steve and I talked about, you guys could look at the those on a second pass through. This was enough on a first go around. So residences, you have to have your address. I think of that as a safety issue, emergency vehicles need to. See that temporary signs, I just had in there that they were allowed. And it would be the four total two on each side. We kept in the no home occupation sign, again, that is content based. And so we would have to consider, do you still want to keep that? Can it be justified? Based on the constitutional. Standards, but I didn't remove that. And then. These in D are for non-residential uses, so you've got your wall sign. Didn't change how big it can be, but added in marquee signs and awning signs. Monument signs, pedestal signs, I didn't change dimensions, so you've got all those are still the same. Then we added in, there could be one changing message sign, but it has to be part of one of those other permanent signs. It's got to be part of your wall sign or your marquee sign. You can have the changing message sign.
Back on back on C, is this? I mean, it seems like that's content.
It is content. That is based on content, so we would have to look at, can we meet the constitutional standard? Do we have the, does the city have enough of an interest? To say no home occupation signs in a residential zone. Something, some a larger issue for you guys to consider and by by leaving it in there, I just want to. Bring the issue to you, what you'd have to meet if you were gonna keep it in there. Then the current code turns to the corridor commercial and the neighborhood business zone. Just adding in here more types. Of signs that are allowed in both of those zones, leaving all the dimensions the same for you guys to consider. Again, the changing message sign, now it has to be part of one of those other signs. So we we didn't want to just add another standalone sign. And then here, it did say one sandwich board sign, I changed that to one temporary sign. Since that's the direction we're going, going in there, so didn't change the number, you would want to consider that. Window sign stays the same, except I took out celebration displays because that's content. There was a special regulation for automobile service stations, which we don't need anymore because we're allowing different types of signs. For any kind of business. No glare on residential property, if it's an illuminated sign, kept that. Then we go to the town center zone. Again, uh, this, this code section just talked about a lot about a planned shopping center. I just took that out, that's how old this code is, the shopping center was in the planning stage. I just took all the references to planned shopping center. But otherwise left it the same, just adding in marquee signs. And then this in B. To help businesses in the town center with the effects from COVID-19 and the lack of business. The mayor and city council had approved some temporary sign provisions to be used during COVID. And it allowed interior businesses to have additional, to have a sign in the town center. And so I've added that. That was a provision that council had talked about needing it permanently in the town center zone anyway. It was part of the temporary provision. We've included it here as an addition to the permanent code. There are some other provisions in that emergency order dealing with temporary sandwich, sandwich boards and temporary banners. I didn't add those into the permanent code. They would still be allowed to have those sandwich boards and banners, you know, while the COVID emergency exists. So we're not taking away the emergency order, I just didn't add them to the permanent regulations. That could be something you would, might want to consider. I think it would just be increasing the number probably. Again, I wasn't changing anything here, other than it used to say reader board sign, which was undefined. And so we're using the defined turn of changing message board sign. Again, we had special regulations for automobile service stations, which we don't need if you allow in different types of signs. This, uh, what's now I gives us the number of temporary signs that are allowed in the town center zone, what hours they could be displayed. That was more, that's more of a safety issue, do those need to be taken down? You know, while it's dark out, I believe was the intent there. The town center temporary signs are not allowed to be illuminated, kept that. And this provision of street banners in L was actually repealed as of 2007. But it still showed up in the code and these banners have been allowed. So I understand Steve would recommend that we just keep it in the code and put it back in after it was repealed in 2007. Southern gateway zone signs, these just are regulated in other, if you look in the southern gateway zone regulations, it tells you where those signs are regulated. What Stephen and I wanted to do here is if somebody turned to sign code, they could see also where southern gateway signs are regulated. So we've added that in. It's not that they weren't regulated, we're just trying to make it easier for folks who are trying to find how those signs are regulated. And this is the signs in the public right of way. So we'll have the definition of public right of way. All prohibited signs are still prohibited in the right of way. And then they're going to be up for more than seven days, require a permit. It can only be temporary lawn and portable signs, which includes sandwich boards. They can't be in the median, traffic islands, roundabouts, other areas within the roadway. So I think of it as sort of outside the curb lines. Can't be in the sidewalk. Not in sight distances, can't create a hazard. This size regulation you guys can play with, I have in here 12 square feet, no single side, six feet and exceed, not exceeding four feet, same as all the other temporary signs, that's six and four. They hat, they can't, they have to be unanchored, so not on the utility poles, we talked about that. And here's the, where I put in a limit on the number, which we talked about, you know, that puts a burden on staff to try and take down, count signs and take certain ones down. But that is in there for your consideration.
Can I ask you a quick question before you move on from there? Do we have to allow signs in the right of way?
No, but then we would want to look at, there are things called, we have to look at the First Amendment rights and has the city created? You create certain areas where you allow free speech to be used, and that includes signs, that includes someone standing on the corner explaining things to you loudly with a bullhorn. And so we, I know there are certain places in the city that have traditionally been these war rooms for free speech. And if, if you wanted to consider not allowing these signs in certain places, we would need to look at that. I did not look at that yet. But we can. We put in a permitting application process. Staff was using one, we're just putting it in code so people can see it maybe before they apply. And I looked again at this to make sure we weren't requiring too much for certain signs, but you know, you only have to provide, you know, building elevation and site plan if it's going to be mounted on a building. So I don't think we're requiring too much for a temporary sign, but we could look at that. I know, I know you don't want to burden people too much for just a temporary sign, but I don't think we did. And then this violations, I changed this from, based on some things we learned when council adopted the personal flotation device code. And the prosecutor came back to us and said, make sure these are civil infractions. She did not want to be prosecuting these as criminal infraction. And so I just made that change. I have not talked to police department about these particular changes, but they were very much in favor of the ones we made for the personal flotation devices and these match. But not the amounts, so you could consider the amounts. And I think that's it. Yeah.
You run out of red, Jim.
Probably. I would say, I, I, this is sort of what I had to do, this, this chart. This is kind of what I did in my mind, and then Steve said, we need a chart. I was like, oh my gosh, that's what I was doing, you know, drawing these little boxes and where does it go? And so Steve's idea of a chart, which I think is helpful. Trying to show you, we're not getting rid of all your, we're not trying to not regulate all the signs, but we've got to do it in a way that will be allowed. And as you can see, most of it is creating things as temporary signs. But that chart might be a helpful place to go to.
I agree, I appreciate what you've done here, and I think just in my role as chair, I want to just state for the group that all of this was intended to sort of give us an idea of how extensive the changes need to be to our code based on, on case law. And our job now is to, and I think this chart is really helpful for that, is to look at areas of our code that are going to have to change. And for us to try to anticipate some of the things that we've started touching on tonight. And so one of the things that each of us will need to do before we meet again is to really start flagging topics that warrant discussion by our group. And then checking, you know, with attorney Pratt to see, you know, well, how can we tackle that? So that we, again, don't have unintended consequences that are, are, you know, generally undesirable. So I, I do think this chart is probably a really good tool for each of us to start making some notes and, and keeping track of those things so we can have an organized conversation. Would you like to give us any other advice, Attorney Pratt or Director Bennett?
I think you've heard a lot. So I, I'm not going to add to it.
Yeah. But in terms of thinking about next steps, if we're going to close this topic for tonight, I think those are our next steps. Is that correct? Taking this information and, and spending some time thinking about where we, where we need to have discussion and propose suggestions, or at least explore what opportunities we have under case law.
I think, I think, you know, your, your questions are going to already generate some options, I guess, we'll bring back to you, policy options, just based on that. But you know, the more, you know, as things to occur to you, you know, we would assume that that's what we'll go through, look at, look at, you know, wording options to address the questions you already have. And then kind of thinking about where, as you ask about it, we're seeing areas where we can improve upon it. See if, so we'll bring back some suggestions just to, you know, like cleaning it up and see if those, you know, are something the commission can coalesce around. So I think on both of our parts, if you now having sort of a better idea what is trying to be, what we're trying to achieve. If you have additional questions, additional policy issues, you know, that coming back to the next meeting with those would be great. And, you know, so, so, you know, we just have to, you know, this is really just the first pass through. And, you know, it may take a couple of more before we're getting close to where you're ready to make a recommendation. So yeah, I think that, that was, I'm glad we were able to get through the whole thing.
Agreed. Okay, uh, thank you, Attorney Pratt, I think, unless, does anybody have any final question? Oh, Jim, you have a question.
Just, just one thing, you know, there's a current case, case before the Supreme Court related to off-premise signs. And it might be helpful for us to get some measure briefing, you've done great work, Kim, and I appreciate it. The briefing before as well as what was today was terrific, but there is a threat potentially for what could really be disruptive for, for sign regulations throughout the country right now. And it might be helpful to know a little bit more about that. We can't obviously anticipate that, but, but I think the issue that I had with temporary signs, it was signs in the right of way, does somewhat come down to the issue of off-premise signs to a degree. And so I think that's going to be the kernel of what we're going to need to struggle with too.
Sure, I can look at, look at that and, and send you guys something.
Excellent, thank you so much. Okay, if there aren't any other questions, I'll move us on to the adoption of our work plan.
I think City Attorney Pratt could sign off if she'd like to.
Please, thanks, everybody, appreciate your time.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to try to clip us along so we finish our business today. We've got, we still have a pretty full agenda. So did everyone have a chance to look at the work plan and is there any, are there any questions or discussion about this draft? Does everybody have it, or do you need us to put it up on screen?
I have it, and I think it reflects our discussion from last time.
Okay. Can I get a thumbs up if, does everyone agree with Richard or is, okay? Let's see, David and Walter, do you have any?
I think, if I may, I just want to articulate my concern, given the amount that we just reviewed from this on the code or the signage issue, 20%, I, I just want to make sure that we will keep ourselves within that 20%. And if not, is this fair? How are we going to do that? But I just, you know, I just have a concern, given the, I'm just surprised at how much, how detailed the signage code is.
Yeah, I, I, Steve, I don't know if you want to address this, I feel like the percentages are sort of a, you know, you know, finger in the air, but yeah, I would, I would say that we are going to spend a bit more time. The question is, is where we're doing work in parallel and then does, you know, or versus spending an entire meeting on, like, we'll, we'll have spent an hour-ish on, we've just spent an hour on this, not the whole meeting. And so I think, I think when that breaks out, if on that, on that pace, that 20% would reflect that we'll have, you know, two to four more meetings on this. And, and I guess I would say, does that feel about right? Or do we need to change that a little bit and deduct it somewhere else? And is that important?
Yeah, I think Chair Larson, that's really, I mean, the, you're just showing the council what your intent is. And everybody knows that, you know, that, that's, it's not binding in any way. And if we went over 30%, you know, over three months, and as you said, overlapping with other issues, it's not a big deal. But it's a goal, you know, to see if we can get it done in an expeditious manner. But if it can't be done, I think it's okay.
Yeah, it does show David why it's really important for us all to take a little bit of time to review the materials that we received this week and, and sort of think ahead about where our discussion items need to be so that we can be very efficient about having those conversations that we go into our meetings, knowing that we want to tackle these six items. And then stick to that versus, you know, meandering through things as they just, you know, in a, in a more haphazard way. So any other questions about the work plan? Or David, did you want to make a proposal, you know, for a change to this draft?
Not at all, I, I prefer to keep it at 20%.
Okay, that's great, let's do it. Okay, any other questions about this before we move to approve it or not? This is sort of your last chance to weigh, weigh in if you have any burning questions or strong feelings. Lois?
Nope, nope, sorry about that, I meant to motion to approve it, I like.
Okay, okay, well, great, does anybody want to?
Second, to a second.
Make it official? Oh, Lois, so Lois, you motion to approve it?
I motioned to approve the draft work plan for 2022 as presented and written.
Great, and Jim?
Second.
Your second, great, all those, any last discussion, I guess I started with discussion. Okay, all those in favor of our planning commission work plan for 2022, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, we did it. All right, one more PDF I can close on my computer. All right, I feel like I'm just ticking down on the bar, I'm not having to scroll now. Okay, our annual report, did everyone have a chance to review our annual report? And do we need to put that on the screen, or do you all have it in front of you? I, since nobody said anything, I'm going to assume you're looking at it. Okay. Any, any questions about this, any comments, recommendations? Council member Bodie?
Yes, I just wanted to suggest that if you want to have some representatives present this to the council, that would be fine to talk about what has been accomplished in the past year. It's not essential, but it is something that, that you could do in conjunction with the, you know, adoption of this annual report. You could actually get on the agenda for either a council work session or a council meeting to make a brief presentation on what's been accomplished. But I leave that to the group to decide.
Thank you for that, Steve, is that something that we've done in the past? And does anybody here? Thank you for that, Steve, is that something that we've done in the past, and does anybody here?
Um, I, you know, I, I don't recall, but, uh, you know, it certainly, um. Uh, would, would be appropriate to, you know, forward it and, and, and offer to come and talk about it if, if, uh. The council wanted to, is that kind of what you're, um, you're suggesting, Councilmember Bodie?
Yes, but also, it, it, I was also suggesting if the Planning Commission wanted to present it, so I think there are two quite, two possibilities there. The Planning Commission could say, you know, I, I, for example, I recall the Tree Board representatives came and, and made a presentation, and. It's not, um. It's not urgent or mandated, uh, and, and certainly the council right now has not requested a presentation, but if the. If the Planning Commission felt they would like to have that interaction, um, for a brief presentation, I think that would be. Fine, so either way, Steve, this is kind of what I'm saying.
Okay, I, I want to do, uh, just, uh, give, uh. Uh, Commissioner Saunders credit for this format, I think he came up with the first one. And, uh, so, so it's, uh, it's made it easy to, to put these together, uh, and we, we appreciate you doing that, Richard.
Welcome.
Um, I, in terms of your idea, uh, Councilmember Bodie, I, I always assume that you all have. So much on your agenda that I, I, I never personally entertain. Uh, making comment or making presentations that, um, you know. Typically, it's just to leave you more time to work on.
That's fine, I just wanted to make the offer, not, not, you know, push.
Yeah, but that, that's just one person's opinion, so I'll ask the group, is that something that any of you have strong feelings about, or feel? That there would be value in, in doing that, um, we can take that up and, and make that happen if, if there is.
I would say. It depends on if we want to more, to kind of reweigh in on the ADU code as things are. Being done and shaping up, this would be an opportunity to express the outreach and also I think consensus we've reached on issues that are maybe being. Revisited by the city council, so that's, I mean, because basically all we did last year was ADU code, right, so. So that, that, this would be an opportunity to do that.
Anybody else have, uh, thoughts about this?
Kind of agree with TJ on that.
Walter, David?
We're gonna put it to a vote, I tend to share the same view as Matty.
I think the only thing I would say is that, uh, as, um, the former chair of the Tree Board, I did, um. Well, and my vice chair, or my, uh, actually, I can't even remember who, who all was there, but we did present the, uh, annual reports to the council, and they very much did appreciate it. At least it was in my experience that they did.
Richard or Lois, Jim?
I think it's a good idea, I mean, uh, the, um. There are new council members that, uh. You know, may, uh, benefit from understanding what the commission did, um. So I, I see value in it.
Okay.
To me, um, I think Councilmember Bodie does a great job in explaining things and keeping up at the council of what the planning commission is doing. I think that's good, but there is something considered that you have new council members that didn't go through that last year. And I think that might be a reason to be helpful for them to know what the planning commission did last year, if nothing else.
Uh, let's see, Melissa or Lois, did either one of you want to weigh in?
No, I, I think. Yeah, I, I mean, personally, I think if the council would, you know, request that, uh, you know, if one of us or a group of us, uh, were to go. Uh, just to attend, uh, you know, there, it would be available for answering any questions of. Um, yeah, I mean, if that request is made, I, I think that would certainly be reasonable for us to, to, you know, to attend and, and clarify. Uh, I, I think we churn through it, um, we, I, I, I really appreciate the documentation that came out of that process, I think that was pretty. Uh, a, a pretty good position paper, if you will, uh, reflecting kind of the, the process that we underwent, so. Uh, again, maybe bouncing it back to Commissioner, uh, Councilwoman Brody, if, if the council would like. Uh, you know, representation from the planning council, I think that is absolutely, um, not a problem.
Okay, well, I think we've had slightly more people that saw value in that, um, than didn't. By the numbers, by, by a margin there, um. Councilmember Bodie is, what, what would be the process then to be officially on, um, the agenda?
So on Thursday, uh, I will provide an update. On the, you know, this planning commission meeting and mention that, um. Uh, as part of the consideration of the, this is the way I heard it, as part of the consideration of the. A updated ADU ordinance that the planning commission is offering to come and, um. And make a short presentation on its work and, and answer any questions.
Does that sound? Would that be for, would that be for this Thursday, or that's what you would say?
That's what I would say this Thursday, and meanwhile, uh, uh, Steve can, can take that, um, possibility back. To our city administrator, um, but I, I will also, uh, talk to the Deputy Mayor Tom French about it and, uh.
Okay, yeah, just let us know and, and we, one of us can, um, be designated and, uh, and, and do that, so just maybe keep us posted. I do have one question about the report, what, didn't Joel wrap up in, like, February of this past year, or was that in twenty?
I think it was twenty, I'll, I'll double check.
That way. Uh, was it right after we made the recommendations for, no? Anyway, I, we, we should check, I thought for some reason he rolled off, and then Steve rolled off the next month.
I think, I was twenty personally.
Yeah, I think Joel, um, went off the commission in late twenty, and then Steve said, uh, I've only got, probably got a few more meetings left, and then. Uh, he, he went off in early twenty twenty-one, but I'll, I'll double check that.
Okay, and, and then does, does Cameron belong on this from a planning staff standpoint?
Sure, yeah, we'll add Cameron too, I thought about that.
All right, uh, and then, could you just clarify on term expiration, it says Jim expires this month, is that? Is, is he renewing then this month?
He is, well, he's, no, he, he's, Jim is expiring, um, uh, a year from this month, twenty twenty-three. Uh, and.
Oh, twenty twenty-three, I read that on.
And he'll, he'll actually be able to renew twice, uh, because he started, uh, finishing, uh, somebody else's term.
I got it, okay, sorry, thank you for that, uh, did anybody else have any questions or edits or anything, uh, with regard to this report before we? Adopted? Do we need any discussion, does anybody? Want to talk about any aspect of it, I, I don't want to just, you know, hey, let's vote for it without making space, uh, for anybody who had, uh, input.
I just think, if you look at what we did last year under Matty's leadership, guys, I think we did a lot of work last year, so I think, thank you, Matty, you, you led us well, thank you.
Awesome.
Nice job, Matty, yeah, really nice job.
Thank you, thank you so much. Okay, well then, uh, let's, uh, I guess, motion to accept this, uh, as our twenty twenty-one report?
I'll make that motion to accept this as our twenty twenty-one report.
I second.
But thanks, Melissa, uh, all those in favor of, uh, this, um, Planning Commission twenty twenty-one annual report as presented, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Great, we did it, all right, now we, uh, we have just a few items left, and, oh, we're doing good on time. Um, we need to have an election, uh, and I also want to certainly make time for reports and announcements, but then I also would like to leave a few minutes at the end just to. Uh, honor Richard, so, um, Steve, do you want to lead us in, uh, and describe for our new members? Our election of officers?
Sure, uh, the process is to, um, open nominations, uh, for officers, we'll start with chair. Uh, and, um, so, uh, once, uh, nominations are open. Uh, you can nominate someone, you don't, you don't need a second for that, um, and so we'll, we'll, we'll go, be in that phase until. There are no more nominations, then we'll have, ask for a motion to close the nominations, uh, and that wouldn't need a second and a vote. Uh, and, and then, then we'll vote on each person, uh, as they were brought up, uh, for the chair position. Uh, and, um, the, then the same process would occur for, for vice chair, so. Uh, if, unless someone else would like to be chair pro tem, I could, uh, move this process or just start the process. So, hearing, no volunteers, uh, let's start, um, with, um, nominations for chair, anybody like to nominate someone?
Nominate Matty.
Okay. Chair Larson is nominated for another year.
Second nomination.
Any, any other nominations? Okay, do we have a motion to close nominations for chair?
No, I, I, I'm sorry, I, I was surprised, I thought, I don't know if we did this, but I thought we were supposed to talk with folks before, um, you know. I, I, I am glad to, um, to do that, I would not, uh, deny that if it's what's needed, but I would really love to, um, nominate somebody that. Um, might be interested, th- this surprised me, um. You know, I don't know, TJ, if you're interested in sharing for a year, no, okay. Gonna negotiate this, um, I'd love to nominate Ira for chair. But if, I mean, th- this is the thing, right, if, if you're nominating somebody and they don't want to serve, um. Would anyone like to nominate themselves?
I'm confused, I didn't think, uh, way back when John Lebo was here, I thought. Once you were chair, you couldn't be chair the following year, is that, did we have something like that?
That was my understanding, or I don't know if it just has to be voted on each year, but, um.
I think you can serve two terms, it was just John we didn't like. I mean, I'm excited to have Matty be our chair again, so.
Yeah, so I've served, I've served for two terms, so I just wanted to, you know, bring that up and, and, uh, I wasn't sure, I thought that's all I could do.
Well, your, your first term wasn't a full term, I don't think, but, or maybe it was, or is your second term actually isn't a full term because your, your first term was delayed.
Well, you were back on a regular schedule, so my first term was, uh, too much short of a year, um, so that's good enough for me. Anyway, I just want to offer, you, you could also nominate yourself if you feel like you might be interested in sharing this group. I don't, and, and also, could we answer that question, Steve, uh, would I even qualify, are, are there limits?
Well, um, we, we can, um, uh, proceed on the assumption that you can serve again, and then. Um, just redo the process if there is a problem, uh, at, at the next meeting.
If you change your mind and you don't like me anymore. Uh, no, but really, uh, if there's anybody who feels like they might like to service chair, I would lo- love to, uh, make space for, for that. So, anybody?
Let's close it and vote, come on.
That, that sounds like a motion to, to close nominations, is there a second?
I second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? All right, nominations are closed, all in favor of, uh, Commissioner Larson being chair next, this coming year, say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, congratulations, Chair Larson.
Thank you for your unexpected confidence.
Matty, just one quick thing, so I am looking at the commission manual, it's on the Lake Forest Park site, and it does say, um. Uh, they are, commission members may be elected to chair the committee in which they are appointed no more than thirty-six months. Out of forty-eight consecutive month period.
I see. Okay, so we're legal here?
I think so.
Okay, well, I will continue, continue, continue to do my best, um, all right, well, Steve?
Uh, okay, yeah, so any, uh, now we, the floor is open for chair, for nominations for vice chair, do we have a nomination?
I would nominate Lois if she's willing to take it.
Sounds like this is a surprise, Lois, too, so, uh, Lois, are, are you, uh, are you comfortable with that?
What's the job description?
If, if I, if I am out, um, at a meeting, you would, you would chair the meeting?
That's basically.
I can read it.
I was gonna vote Richard, but nominate Richard.
It wouldn't be very long term.
But I guess this is an important question that Lois asked, so, um, since you have voted me as chair, something that's been important to me, um, that I had done with Rachel. Was to, um, simply keep you copied on emails between Steve and myself as we talk about agenda items. If there's some conversation, um, between Steve and myself about, you know, how to shape up the agenda for the next month, or the framing. Of our work, um, that's something that, uh, that the co-chair is, um, or the vice chair. Is, uh, party to and can weigh in on, um, and then of course, if I'm not at a meeting. Um, then the, the vice chair would, would chair that meeting, so there's a, a little bit of, um, I think kind of also priming, you know. Uh, getting to see the, the light process that we use to organize our meetings and, um, hopefully be a good, uh, proving ground for, um. For them being ready to chair next year.
They seem like big shoes, but I'd be happy to be a part of that process.
Great, is there anybody else that wants to nominate? Thanks, Lois.
All right.
So we still need it, we still need a second for the nomination of Commissioner Lee for vice chair?
No, you, you don't need a second for, for nominations, so, uh, well, we do, we need a second for a motion to close nomination, so, um, just. So let's see, is, is, is there anyone else that would like to nominate themselves or nominate anyone, uh, else for position of vice chair? Okay, hearing none, uh, is there a motion to close nominations for vice chair?
Motion to close nominations for vice chair.
Second?
Second that.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, it carries, so, uh, nominations are closed for vice chair. Um, all those in favor of Commissioner Lee being vice chair for the next year, please say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, so, graduation, Vice Chair Lee.
Welcome.
All right, thank, thank you all, back to you, Chair Larson.
Excellent, okay, well, that takes us to, um, you guys, first of all, well done, we went, got through a lot, and, um, not in any small part. To Director Bennett and Attorney Pratt's great work, um, on organizing those, um, that review of the sign code. Uh, let's see, reports and announcements, um, Steve?
Um, I don't really have anything, uh, I think Commissioner, I mean, uh, Councilmember Bodie has covered, uh, where, uh, the council's at with ADU pretty well. There's, you have any additional questions for me, I'd be happy to try to address those, but that would have been the only thing I, I would have, uh, brought to your attention, so, but nothing else from staff.
Okay, let's see, we have some folks that are still with us this evening, um, would any of you like to, uh, make, um, citizen comments? If so, please, uh, raise your hand. All right, we've got a taker.
Go ahead, Mr. D.
Welcome.
Howdy, Mike D here, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you, howdy, Mike D with the Lake Forest Park Citizens Commission, thank you for the opportunity to comment tonight. I wanted to answer a question that was out there on the Lake Forest Park Tree Board, your council liaison is Councilmember Larry Goldman. And let's state and address that. Um, there was some talk about the Lake Forest Park Climate Committee. That will be on the February 10th agenda this Thursday of the regular business meeting of the Lake Forest Park City Council. Be resolution 1836 and it's scheduled for introduction and discussion. They are looking for eight community members and one ex-officio high school or college student. And there's already resumes in for a number of people, Julian Anderson, Tamara Erickson, Sarah Phillips, Brian Sanders and, and Udeloy. So there may, may still be some openings there unless some council members have some picks already available. I wanted to draw your attention to the third North King County Coalition on Homelessness meeting that's on the calendar. We have been asking that this be an open meeting and it's not yet openly, an openly published meeting. It's requiring people to contact the shoreline staff and people have been required to file, once they contact the staff, they've been required to file a signed paper contract or a signed contract to attend. And there's no meeting minutes, no agenda, no information as promised and agreed by the Lake Forest Park City Council, staff and administration. So to us, it's more of a hidden, closed and unacceptable type of meeting that's happening in or with Lake Forest Park city officials or elected officials. And Lake Forest Park doesn't have a positive track record for this type, kind of stuff. So we want to encourage that to be an open meeting. And then where this comes in as you is, uh, the Planning Commission is your, your, our citizen representatives. You're the commissioners that recommend programs and policies according to the needs and values of the community. I encourage you all to present your annual report and your work plan to the city council. I want to thank Ms. Jang for her REU reasonable use exception, um, comments and, and work on that. I want to thank Commissioner Saunders for as many years of service and congratulations Chair Larson and Vice Chair Lee to your, your election there. And good job everyone on, on every, on all your work. Thanks again, Mike D.
Mike, as you know, that's a concern for me and I encourage you to, um, comment at the council meeting, uh, on Thursday.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Any other citizen comment? Oh, go ahead, Ira.
I was gonna say, thank you, Mike. It's been a long time since we heard from you.
I know. It's good to hear your voice. Any other citizen comments? If so, just raise, use that little raise hand feature at the bottom of the Zoom screen. Okay, seeing none, uh, the agenda for our next meeting will certainly include, um, sign code and, uh, and, uh, we'll, we'll aspire to get some communication to you the, at least the week before, um, our meeting with, um, just a reminder of, uh, how you can best prepare, uh, and what to expect from that meeting. Uh, Steve, do you want to add anything about the agenda for our next meeting?
Um, no, not at this point. Thanks.
Okay. Um, so that brings us to the end and I just wanted to say, wow, Richard, thank you so much for just, and being just an incredible, uh, partner in this work, a great mentor to all of us. At this point, you have the most institutional history of, of, uh, any commissioner on this call. And, um, you, we just, I, I've personally learned so much from you and really appreciated developing a friendship, you know, with you through this work. So, thank you so much and we, we hope that we'll continue to see you engaged, um, where it fits in your, in your life.
Thank you, Maddie. That's, that's very sweet. And, uh, thank you for the dropping off the chocolate, uh, cupcake. I, I have not had one yet, but they, uh, they smell delicious. And, uh, thank you for the notes too, folks. I really appreciate that.
Welcome. I read it. You were trying to say something.
I was just gonna ask Richard if we could meet down at the grill for something here in the next week or two. With, with the rest of us, whoever wants to show up, you got a time?
I'm totally up for having a beer with, with folks. Sure.
Ira, you want to coordinate us offline?
I will do that offline. You bet.
Thank you so much. Anybody else have any, uh, parting comments?
I'd just like to say on behalf of the city staff, um, Richard has gotten us through some very contentious issues, especially with the Southern Gateway, um, uh, rezoning and, and, uh, design guideline process. I know that was a, a little trying and, um, but, uh, so it's, it's been really great to work with you, Richard, and thanks for all you've done for the city.
Yeah, thank you, Steve.
I just wanted to say, I, I, I feel sad that you're ending right now, um, given the experience you have with working on our last comp plan. I, I think your, your absence will be, uh, pretty pointed as we step into this next one.
Well, we've got some great, the, the thing that I'm always impressed at is how, what great quality people we get uh, on the board. So can already see that, uh, Walter and Jim are, uh, great additions and, uh, and it's a diverse group, you know, different backgrounds. So, I, yeah, so just a couple of things I, I'd like to say, um, you know, that it's, it's certainly, my experience has been the, the typical volunteer experience where you get out of it so much more than you put into it. I've learned so much about the city. I've learned to appreciate all the work the city staff does. Steve, you've been a, a great, uh, mentor, teacher and a very patient coach. Um, and how you, how you keep being patient after 10 years is pretty amazing. Uh, I have so much respect for the city staff and how much work and, you know, pressure they're under. And it, and the city council work extremely hard. I don't think most people realize how much time they put into their job. And, um, I, I think, you know, really appreciating the community of what, I, I mean, I joined the planning commission to give back, but you know, we have a really special little municipality here. Uh, and we have a, a really great bunch of people, um, that are really so connected in a way that I don't think you see, you know, in most places. So I think that is, we're very, very fortunate to have. And, um, I think just thinking about planning, I guess, uh, probably one of the most impactful things I learned was just about how much, uh, planning is about, you know, not just about land use and the environment, but about social justice. And so I, I think if I was to, you know, give a nod to anything to keep in mind as you're working on the next comp plan is, uh, that, that is, that really is a, a huge part and a huge responsibility and, and really a, a great thing about planning is that, uh, it's, it's about, you know, making sure that the disadvantaged, uh, people in society, um, are, you know, taken care of. So, yeah, thank you. Steve, thank you, Lake Forest Park, City of Lake Forest Park. And, uh, it's great to see that the planning commission will keep going forth and being strong. And I've enjoyed, I haven't worked with all of you as much, but I've enjoyed, uh, I've enjoyed everybody that I've worked with on the, you know, over the last decade.
Thank you again. Okay. Well, um, on that lovely note, do I have a motion for adjourning?
What can I do?
Yes, please.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Nobody's supposed to second that one. So we just left Richard here.
Sorry, you're stuck. Okay. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye. All those opposed? Okay, we are adjourned. Welcome again, Jim and Walter. We, um, will look forward to diving in again with you next month and, um, all of you. I, I wish you, uh, health and happiness and, uh, in, uh, what we have left of February.
Thanks, Maddie. Thanks, everybody.
Good night. Thank you, Councilmember Bodie. Thank you, Steve.
Okay. Thank you, Maddie.
Bye.
Bye bye.